PM. The first agenda item is a public meeting for Lauren Macken.
Yeah, I don't know.
Case number 2023-01, 31 Glen Street. And want to discuss an extension for the special permit. You want to join us at the table?
Yes.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, anyway.
Well, I'm Lauren's father, Brittany Macken. When we received the initial permit, it was for one year. And we came back at six months just for... We knew the year was coming. And we received an invitation from you people to ask for an extension. So that's what we did. We asked for an extension. We decided we don't want the extension. The last meeting, they would ask us for a more concise schedule to completion. I'm 70 years old and I have health issues. And if I was to give you a concise schedule, we would feel obligated... We talked this over. We would feel obligated to need that. And I can't take that kind of pressure. So a week after the last meeting, we got out of the trailer. We moved the trailer up by the road and we had to go sail. We had two parties come to take a look at it. She's still moving out of there a little bit. And we're done.
Yeah, you don't mind, Dan?
No, go ahead.
In our zoning bylaws, you can't have the trailer for more than one year. It is specific in there. It says, "may not be more than one year." So it's not an option for us to grant an extension on it anyway. So that part of it works. So it's not so much a concise, trying to hold you down to the day, right? Just trying to get an idea of what you're doing. It's obvious that you're trying to do the best you can and you're working weekends or whatever it is that you're working on.
But we try to... We start at eight o'clock in the morning. We try to finish by three. And we'll only work on a weekend if it's something we have to figure out. One of the problems is weather. I mean, we've got a lockdown inside. We've got an incredible amount of time inside. And we've done outside, we've got the weekend, we have the weather to do.
Yeah, well, good thing is, we're in the spring. So the weather should get better if it stops raining ever. But just trying to get a handle on what your timeframe is. Obviously, our jurisdiction, we needed a special permit and you're withdrawing that.
Put the trailer, the permit.
Correct. So the building inspector had just given me a copy of some of his notes. Obviously, the, I guess it's a mute point about I had asked last time for some receipts on the...
Yep, we brought them with us. Yeah. We hired him at meetings, correct?
Yep. He has a note on... Well, he had... I'll just read the notes that he has and then you can go accordingly, I guess. Garage demolition. He didn't know where you stood with that.
The garage is completed and he has inspected.
Okay, so his note wasn't...
Fine, let's use the...
He didn't update his note and he handed it to me about 4:30. So I'm only reading what was handed to me.
Yeah.
Sunroom framing?
Excuse me?
The sunroom?
Has the weather... The weather has given us the...
Yep, so that, okay. The... He has septic approval on here. Did you have a septic put in or...
There is a septic system there. We'll need a Title V before our consent. And we'll get a Title V.
Yep.
And there was also a problem that we had with the well. We were never able to get water out of the well with the house. And when we did get water, it wasn't very good.
Yep.
And, you know, so, you know, we spent a lot of time mucking around with that.
Right.
So we finally just decided to figure out the well and go with the town.
The... He met with you about the dam?
He asked me about the dam. I've talked to two engineering companies. One of them also has on staff the dam safety officer.
Yep.
And I checked prior with... Prior to actually Lauren purchasing the property with the conservation people. Mr. Says, "I made a million calls." Most of them, you know, didn't go anywhere other than they don't see a problem at all with the size of that. So the water here...
The body of water.
Body of water.
Yeah, so now, just on earth dams, I have a little bit of experience with that. I have actually known somebody that has a pond with an earth dam on it. So there is, through DCR, there is some regulations. That dam is listed.
Right, it was very hard to get...
Because I did check it, but it's still a dam. So there's... You might want to check into the criteria of that because they're very specific about the size of the trees that you can have on there because the theory is that if the tree dies or whatever, the roots at some point rot away and then the water comes from, right?
Yeah, one of the things that both of them have asked me to do is they need a concise history of that whole pond area. When it was built? Because it was man-made. When it was built, they want to know the exact size of it. They want to know the depth measured in a bunch of different areas.
Is there a spillway or anything on that?
There is a spillway. The size of the spillway, they want, you know...
No, but there's a spillway on it. So is there boards in that or is it me?
No, it's just a pipe.
Just a pipe.
Four-inch pipe, yeah.
Four inches?
Yeah, that's it.
Wow.
Yeah, and...
Because with all the water that we have here, I would imagine that the water's starting to back up a little maybe.
So, no. We watched it very closely.
Every day.
Yeah. Around December, around Christmas time, we got like seven inches of rain. That's the only time I saw it go up.
December 18th.
There you go.
You remember, the first one was on December 11th. It was four inches.
And it went up. And there's actually a little area, like a relief area. And I opened up the relief area, let it out, and within a day, it was back down in north. So we're doing research. The other thing is, there's no triptychary that feeds it. It's all spread there.
So that driveway is existing because I found an old map that shows, plot plan that shows that driveway on there that you found when you did your water line. It took the mystery out of it.
Yeah, came as a big surprise to us.
He wanted to keep it...
He wanted to keep it... I says, "No." I says, "You gotta not throw it in with your dirt." That's what he wanted.
Yeah.
I says, "Stop there."
Yeah, what brought up that conversation, just for your benefit, what brought up that conversation was how close you were to the body of water. So you just triggered conservation interest. So that's where that came from.
So that extra driveway there, what, you know, it's just there and that's it, right?
Oh, yeah, no, you're gonna have it. It's there. It's been there since at least '94, according to the plan that I seen.
Okay.
So, I know for a while.
It came as a surprise to us.
Yes. It's not a very disbelieve either.
No, it's not very disbelieve.
Well, yeah, if you replace these, just check with conservation so you don't get any more nonsense.
I don't think...
I know, I'm just saying. Oh, he says garage roof permit completed. So getting back to it, just a rough idea what you think, kind of timeframe. I'm sure that there's people in the audience or whoever that would be curious as to what the thought process is. That's all. Just trying to help everybody get their head around what's going on.
Our wiring is all roughed in.
Yep.
Electrician's got maybe two more days with work, but he happens to be on vacation. So when he gets back, he's gonna do that and we can get a rough wiring. We hope the pond is gonna start in two weeks. Two to three weeks, the pond is gonna start. And then the interior will move along pretty quickly at that point. And then all our time will be on the outside of the building. I would love to see her be able to get in that house, you know, hopefully it stops raining.
And you would like to give up your part-time job?
I would, very much so. And, you know, do some other stuff.
Yep.
I would like to see her in there, you know, early fall. I'm gonna tell you that, but, you know.
Get some time.
We're there every day. We're working every day.
Right. Yep. All I'm trying to do is answer some of the questions that are being asked, right? So that's why I'm going through this list with you. Our jurisdiction ends with the trailer. Obviously, this is Dan's meeting and I'm gonna have to shut up soon because he's gonna kick me, but...
Do you want this receipt or should we give it to the building department?
No, you can give them to Dan and he'll hand them in with the packet.
Okay, it's only one. It's an open receipt because we're gonna have that trailer pumped again.
Yep.
Okay, we're hoping to sell it, but we may have to pump before we sell it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. You need one?
Yeah.
You're gonna have mine already read through it. I know, I know, whole thing by heart. No.
Thank you, sir.
I just want sort of notes I have, everything.
The permit for the trailer was for six months.
It was for a year. We had a one-year... So that's done. So what they're saying now is that they have it up for sale. They took it off the block that's down by the street with a sales sign on it.
We have the sales signs on it and we've got two people interested. Whereabouts from that, I don't know.
Yep. By law, the permitted use isn't allowed anymore without a special permit if you've exceeded the one year.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments on this? Sir?
Paul Dorfman, I own the property at 31 Glen Street.
Okay.
I just have a question. Before they get an occupancy permit, do they have to have the septic system approved?
Yes.
Yes.
Because I know they didn't have to... They bought it probably without financing. So I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, he had stated that at the beginning that the building inspector's already made him aware of the fact that he has to have a Title V done on it before he can get his certificate of...
Because I know it's like to the left of the little garage near the property line, kind of where it sits.
Yeah, the leach field's up there. The tank in the pumps is behind the house.
We had to raise the property up there when we were building the house for show.
Yeah.
The old town engineer thought we were in the water table all the time.
He got you out of it, huh? He got you out.
Well, we weren't, but...
Sorry, I know that. I'm only teasing you.
But he was... It wasn't bothering me, but Andy was spending a lot of money...
Right.
Looking for water for him.
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion about the blocks going up the hill and all kinds of crazy things.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. All righty.
Thank you.
That's my only question.
Okay. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, so you can...
We want to thank you for taking the time from a year ago to now.
Yep.
It hasn't always been easy, but everyone at least, you know...
We're all working in the same direction.
...our best interest and we're all working towards an end goal.
Right, yeah. Everybody had the same goal in mind to get to the finish line, so that's why we did what we did for you.
Yeah.
So anyways, you've been paroled from us, so you don't have to do any visitations.
Okay. Feel free anytime to stop by and say hi. Do you want to see the progress we've made? We're pretty proud of what we've done so far.
Yep. Wish you luck in the project.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second agenda item is the continued public hearing for Dawn Valentine. Case number 2024-04, Ten Tole Court. Yeah, if you'd like to join us, please. So we have your application and whatever information you can give us other than what we have would be great.
Brief description, yeah. Can he?
Oh, okay. I'm with you on that.
Yeah, not to be rude then, but we're gonna have a problem because the minute taker's not gonna be able to get that. So in our packet, she actually gave us a brief description of her hours and what she wants to do. If I could try to help her through it a little bit.
Paul, your application.
Like I said, I'm not looking for anything big.
Yeah.
Not a lot of people.
Yeah.
What I want to do...
There's a description there. So he's gonna read your...
I'm just gonna read it aloud because people that are watching probably didn't hear what you had to say.
Mostly the minute taker, yeah.
So on your application, you said the hours of operation would be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and an occasional later appointment, 3:00 to 6:30 on Tuesday and Wednesday if necessary. I'm really only looking to do three to four massages per day. And this will not impact neighborhood traffic. There will, in general, be only one client in my home at a time. So on street parking, will not be an issue. Parking is available in our driveway or on the street. Handicap parking is available in the driveway. A restroom for clients is located near the massage room on the basement level. So...
We've spoken with several of our neighbors there. We've covered some of it. I know, I would have showed up.
We're not here for that. But if you want blueberry, you can get some.
Just so you know, under... I'm just gonna read this out loud. Under a special permit for such use, if granted by the Board of Appeals, subject to the conditions including, but not limited to, restriction of hours and operations. So if this gets approved, we'll presumably approve it with the hours that you proposed. And the maximum floor area needs to be determined, which I didn't see that in the application, but...
You have a room that you're using?
Do you know approximately how big it is?
Twelve by fifteen? Yeah, 180, 200 square feet.
Maximum 200 square feet? And then it has to be off-street parking, which you do have. Some I did, actually drove by. And the maximum number of daily customer vehicle trips. So if you're gonna propose and do three or four a day, we're assuming it'll be three or four vehicle trips a day?
Yeah. It might be, I don't know.
Okay, all right. And such a special permit shall be limited to five years or the transfer of the property, whichever occurs first. So in the event you're still looking to do it in five years, you don't have to come back. All right. Do you have anything else you wanted to add to?
Nothing.
Whatever, okay.
If you have any questions.
I'm gonna open it up to board members if anybody has any questions for Dawn.
I don't have any questions.
No. Ron?
No.
Okay. So anybody in the room that would like to speak on this application?
Just so you know, two massage I do. Is therapy excellent?
Okay. All right. If there's no other information, I guess we could close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Palmer to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is now closed. Would like to move forward with a decision tonight?
I agree.
Okay.
Can I steal that for a minute?
Absolutely.
I'm gonna steal your, the, her application. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve... I just have to find her. I just have the whole application here. I should have looked at it.
What, the case number?
Uh...
Here's the case number.
Make a motion to approve case number 2024-04. Don't get excited yet because motions are always made in the positive. To approve case number 2024-04. And this application is for a special permit pursuant to Mass General laws 48. It's a home-based massage therapy business at Ten Tole Court. I'm gonna reference out of our zoning bylaws, 3.2.01, accessory uses in a residential district. Home occupations by special permit. Home occupation may be allowed, special permit issued by the Board of Appeals provided Specific thing that I want to pull out of here is the off-street parking. It's specific in here. So you noted in your application that you could park in the street. It won't be able to park in the street. That, I guess you couldn't until somebody complained, but by a proposed permit, you're not gonna be able to do that. In your application, you called out your hours, which will be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And on Tuesday and Wednesday, late afternoon hours from 3:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m.
That's rare. I mean, that's rare, so we can't make it.
It's just part of your permit. So you're better off, if you're thinking of having it, put it on there. And the other thing is, you talked about having three clients a day, three to four clients. So I would add up to four visits per day. Anybody conclude my motion?
Okay. We have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, your special permit is granted. It's gonna take realistically probably 30 days. And then we'll file it with the town clerk and we'll move as long as quickly as we can, but we rely on our town council to draft the motion. So, well, good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Come on.
Good luck. All right, the next agenda item is public hearing for 36 Locust Street LLC, Aaron Sokrat.
Sokrat.
And the case number is 2024-03, 36 Locust Street. The following was posted in the town hall and also advertised in the Telegram Gazette. He noticed, read as follows. Aaron Sokrat is requesting a special permit in an RA zone district pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 9, in the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 9.3 and Section 3.4.3, non-conforming structures, to construct a farmer's porch with a second-story addition above and a 10 by 14-foot deck on a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located at 36 Locust Street. Assessors map 221, posse 1-5. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Aaron Sokrat. I own and purchase in Locust Street. And, but I live elsewhere for a time, so I wanted to live elsewhere.
Okay.
My son, Nick.
Mm-hmm.
A farmer, Nick.
Yep.
And this is his fiancee.
Hi.
Leanne.
Very good.
Do you have a venue picked out yet?
Maybe. Amongst the natural resources, right? So I can pass these two pictures to kind of tell enough. We just have seen, you know, who been, everyone's been there, you know? That few on the side where the existing panels are, we're proposing to come out in line with the existing house with a classic, just farmer's porch coming out, six feet, wingspan about 6 feet. And one of the pictures actually put a reflector inside the bush, which is bigger than the addition, so... And then doing a second floor above, as you can see in the elevation, which extends to a second floor, six feet. Because right now, there's a three-and-a-half-foot wall in the front and in the back, and it's tiny upstairs. It's three bedrooms, we've got three bedrooms. That's it. Just sort of get better bedrooms. And the house currently is 1787. It's due to be redone. And then also, we're gonna reskin it, replace some of the windows in the past already. And it'll get all this lining and it's due for nothing. That's it. But because of the cant, the angle to the street, which, let me tell you, we didn't even follow. When you get the survey, you know. So we're asking for like 19 inches to come because of the cant comes closer than a 19-9 is now. And then we're gonna go to 18 foot, 18.2, so it's like 19 inches or so.
So 19-9 is the corner of the house.
The existing corner of the house to the property line. And in the picture with the angle, oh, you wanna pass that? Can we pass that over there? This is telling because there's also a stone wall in about another five feet to the street and it's on good straightaway. So we're proposing to go out, that bush is further out this way and that way. And that's it.
Yeah, so it's not 19 inches, you're looking for...
1.7 inches.
Well, you can call it 1.7, but you're within the 50-foot setback.
We are.
So you're looking for to extend the relief further than what it is.
Pre-existing.
The original house is pre-existing, yeah.
And then the deck will be on the back, in line with the rear. But because of the cant, it's kind of further away than the rest is, but still non-conforming.
The deck in the back is no closer than the house to the street, yeah.
Because of the angle.
Yep. The only thing that's closer to the street is this, the front porch.
The front porch, right, corner.
Yep.
Because we're coming straight up, we're continuing the line, we're extending, we're continually the non-conforming, but it's extending because of the angle of the house.
Did you consider doing your addition back instead of front once?
Really wanted, you know, the farmer's porch, we'll look on that house and then it's where both bedrooms are, either side, we can raise that to the full height and get a normal-sized height, rather than set at three-and-a-half inch, three-and-a-half foot, you won't be front. And there's nowhere to go on the other side anyway. There's already things there.
And you...
There's a bathroom in the back already.
Okay, and it's currently a three-bedroom and it's gonna, we made a three...
It's gonna be a three-bedroom.
So septic, there's no...
It's got to be a septic anyway because of, you're in a house you're...
Any board members have any questions for the application?
No.
Anybody else in the room with any questions?
So why is this a special permit? Because it's pre-existing, non-conforming? Is that what makes it a special permit?
Yeah, it already has its own violation. It was, but it's pre-existing, non-conforming, now we're just expanding it ever so slightly.
It was followed by a phrasia, projected, projected...
Mm-hmm, right.
It has to be eternal, it's felt, it's not further potential exercise.
That's one of the criterias. The other one's a hardship, right? So the hardship is the hot one too.
Yeah, there's really nowhere else.
And don't misunderstand me, this is just a mental exercise I have to go through. So I'm not trying to give you a hot time, but at the same time, we're trying to be fair and consistent to everybody, right? So... So, what I was doing, I asked you if you could go back for a reason because we just need to go through this process to ask that question, right? So, I started looking at the, at the floor plan, so you have a set of stairs there. I'm assuming that you're going to have to, those stairs exist, no, they can't be existing because you put the addition on.
These stairs exist as a mark.
These stairs here are going to be new, right? Or are these going up? Oh, these are going up, going down, okay. So, that's going to stay, stay.
And that's going up.
Yep.
That's first.
So, what, so if you...
Well, it looks like part of the reason for the farmer's porch also is to get some height there and that wrapped up. Otherwise, you thought you'd be coming down, so...
Oh, yeah, I get that, but what I was asking, so if this, this wall would just be in line with this wall, this just all slides back, if this slid back this way, it would just overhang over here.
Yeah.
That's why I asked that question. It's still over the, it's still over the line either way. What do the other houses like on the street? Are they, are they 50 feet from the street, or are they up near the street?
Some are.
I'm searching for something to help me with my decision, so...
Right, some are. Most of them are newer. This is a really old house, this is in the late 1700s. This is, we have 28 acres. This thing just trams into the corner of the property. I mean, not on purpose, it's just there. And we really got, we felt we had nowhere else to go, and again, this is space and within six feet, because we're raising that height for that knee wall, it really doesn't just give you six feet, you know, going like this or five feet, it gives you the knee wall height. So, it gives you not hitting your head in the front. So, that's part of it.
I get it.
Oh, you got it, I know you got it.
I've done a couple.
Yeah, this is, this is...
Yep.
It is, it's an elegant solution, in my opinion, and obviously, I came up with it with my son. And the front of it's got some interest, and farmer's porches are generally pretty porous, you can see through when they have penetration, they have depth to a house in the front of the farmer's porch, and it is, farmer's porch...
I'm not disputing, I'm not disputing any of the aesthetics or any, you don't have to sell me on it. I would put a farmer's porch on my house, too.
The hard job is we looked for other places you can't put it. You know, the kitchen's in the back, the bathroom is in the back on the second floor, the laundry's in the back on the first floor. It's open on the front where you can expand, and that's really what we're, that's what we did.
Yeah, it doesn't appear you had many, many options.
It's not a lot of options. I mean, this is, let's just say, this is the elegant option. This is the one that preserves it looking like farmhouse, it's going to give them the space they need in the sun, but also not, you know, the street is fairly decently wide, and there is a stone wall that's a higher, and the house is a higher, and it's his farmer's porch, first floor's a fairly non-soldered wall, so they're close. You feel it's the elegant solution. Everyone, I, you know, everyone's excited.
That's why they joined you here.
That's why what?
That's why they joined you here.
Does anybody else have any questions?
No.
You're all set? Okay. All right. We'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Forget to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public hearing is now closed.
And then, what I did is, just so it was, because of the printing, it was a little hard to read, so I just took his, put his date above it on both pages. The deck does, we closed our public hearing. The deck does call out the 10 by 14, the six, all the dimensions are on there.
Yeah.
And he has his attached plot plan that shows our offsets.
We'll use the plans for the addition.
Yeah, we always, in the event things get approved, we always reference the dated plan and, you have the height, you, we could have put Aaron on there if you wanted to put that. But we just reference the plan, so we have something to record, that's all.
All right. The board would like to make a decision on, to entertain that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I move to approve the plan as presented.
Okay. And we'll reference the house plans and the plot plan.
Yeah, so case number 2024-03.
Yeah. Okay, so the motion by Mr. Forget?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Palmer. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to add to that, that we're going to reference the, the architectural plans that are dated 1/12/24. There's elevation pictures in the floor plan that call out the dimensions of the front farmer's porch, which would obviously give you the dimensions to the upper level, and then the rear proposed deck. Also, there's a certified plot plan. We want to put their name on this, oh, Continental Land Survey, dated January 4th, 2024. Just like that, that's the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Yep. Mr. Forget made a, proposed to approve this. Mike made a couple amendments and...
I'm seconding it.
You're going to second it? Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, you're welcome. Typically, it's been taking about 30 days to get...
As soon as you can.
Yep.
We, it's funny, I missed the appropriate date by two days, application, March, I had the privilege of being away with my wife, so I didn't make that, so, which is fine. Well, we're probably getting issued a time department, interior, we have lots of folks today, you know, and I appreciate the time. I start with a what, as you know? We're two weeks ahead of you. So, we still have a record, yes, we're...
No, we're still on the meeting.
So, I got to be here.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Good night, good luck, good luck.
Thank you.
January 3rd is the approval minutes, and I'm just looking.
Yep. I'll do the copy of that.
See, did you find Jasmine George yet?
Yeah.
All right. You have eight minutes, Ron?
Good night.
Back at the poll that is January 3rd minutes, we're just going to see if we can approve these.
Yeah. Yeah.
Ready? I'd like to make a motion to accept the zoning board appeals meeting minutes from Wednesday, January 3rd, 2024, as written.
Okay. Second. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Palmer, and seconded by Mr. Forget to approve the minutes as written of January 3rd.
January 3rd.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those minutes are approved. I do have a couple of vouchers that need to be signed, I'll pass them around. And I'll just kind of make, mention that we did get a daily construction report for North Village, but our building commissioner's not here to go through them. Usually, he's the one that's in contact with them.
Right, yeah.
Engineer, so I guess we can review them on our own time, and if there's any questions, we can discuss it with him next month.
No, he won't. He's going to be out on leave, probably missed next month as well.
Okay. All right.
So, I don't know if there's anything of any concern, but...
Yeah, I read through it, I didn't see anything that was...
I didn't, I missed anything.
Didn't see anything that was really problematic.
No. What we could do is just maybe check with, I think he's answered the question, but just check with Jackie, make sure our floorable ratios are good.
Yep.
No, that's fine.
I took it out the other room.
And one other thing that was listed on our agenda was, it was a, two applications were received for potential board members, and one of the applicants had a personal issue and wasn't able, planned to attend, but wasn't able to. So, we do have four of us currently, and we're just going to postpone that for the time being.
Yeah.
Just to give a, free shout to both applicants.
Right.
That's what I'm doing.
Make one of those. Yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting's adjourned at 7:43.